Got it. Well, welcome to all the candidates and to our attendees to this forum this afternoon. It's such a pleasure to be here to moderate this candidate's forum hosted by the Alameda Health Consortium. This afternoon's event is a nonpartisan candidate's forum for the Alameda County Board of Supervisors in District 3. This forum is an opportunity for constituents, our community partners, community members to become familiar with the candidates' profiles, priorities, and policy platforms. Candidates, you will have time to introduce yourselves and answer some moderated questions, and we will be taking a couple of questions from the audience. I'd like to share a few ground rules before we begin. Candidates are expected to maintain civil discourse. Any civility, instability will be stopped by the moderator and may result in exclusion from future forums. Each candidate will have the chance to answer questions, and there will be no rebuttals. There will be a digital timekeeper that will be shown and visible to all of you to monitor your time limit. Candidates, you will have two minutes to respond per question and one minute for a closing statement. So we will begin with providing the opportunity for you all to provide a two-minute opening statement. We would like all of you to start off by telling us about yourself and your motivations for running for the Alameda County Board of Supervisors District 3 seat. We will begin with Ms. Lena Tam, followed by Serlene Grant, David Kockishiba, and then Rebecca Kaplan. So I will now turn it over to Lena Tam. And I want to make sure Jody is the timer working on your end? It is not? Okay. So, Afumia, maybe what we'll do is if you can kind of give a signal for when one minute is left and then 30 seconds, and I will let you know when time has ended. I'll turn it over to Ms. Lena Tam.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Julia. Thank you for hosting this forum and the opportunity to learn about your current policy priorities. I had served on the Alameda City Council as the first Asian woman vice mayor, and I'm running for the Alameda County Board of Supervisors following the tragic passing of Wilma Chan with a very profound sense of responsibility and determination to improve county services for working family and also help serve as the bilingual voice for our large and growing immigrant population, where the Asian American population makes up about a third of the county. I plan to address the issues of housing, community safety, and healthcare, but especially mental healthcare access, and bring my lived experience as a daughter of immigrant parents who relied on county bilingual healthcare as your next supervisor. I live and I grew up in Alameda going through the public school system, graduated from UC Berkeley in environmental engineering. I've worked in Oakland Chinatown for the last 30 years at the East Bay Mud Building, and I have a proven track record in elected office in giving a voice to our multicultural community. When I was vice mayor of the city of Alameda, we worked to get affordable housing built for our low-income seniors, veterans, and we converted an old hotel into workforce housing. When I was president of the Alameda Healthcare District Board of Directors governing Alameda Hospital, we established an infusion center to provide access to cancer treatment close to home and consolidated surfaces for women's health so that they have safe reproductive choice and care. We partnered with the county ultimately to seismically retrofit the hospital. As chair of the Alameda County Planning Commission, I entitled 2,400 housing units near transit to preserve open space and reduce traffic red light. I'm the Water Resources Manager at East Bay Mud, and I developed plans to address climate change and protect our bay from pollution. I would be honored to... I'm sorry?
If everyone can please mute if you are not...
Trish just came back and gave me the update, which we do for everyone when we check it and stuff. And I just wanted to check with you.
Jody, can you go ahead and try and mute?
No, how are you to make it till the end of the year? What's the practical?
I think my time is up anyway, so I would be honored to earn your vote and also learn more about your issues through the questions that you're asking. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Lena. Ms. Grant?
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Serlene Grant. I am a resident of San Leandro, and I served on the San Leandro City Council for 10 years. I was the first person of color to be elected to the San Leandro City Council, and it's, at that time, 125-year history. I'm committed to working for people who are underrepresented and who do not have the means, be it time or resources, to fight through the bureaucracy. Your question, you specifically called out what motivated me to run. There were two kinds of things that motivated me to run. The primary one that took me over the edge was a housing client, affordable housing client that received a foreclosure notice on January 31st, on the same day that the governor was announcing new affordable housing developments being available, and people shouldn't be homeless. So the state was serving a foreclosure notice and celebrating new housing in the same time, and the county had a role in that, and that motivated me. The other thing that motivated me was the bureaucracy and challenges people are having with healthcare, in particular, calling out the San Leandro Hospital on this one, but as part of the larger system, as you all know, in that the care was good, care was fine, but people couldn't get through the paper bureaucracy. One person, her mother, had passed away, and I was asking, when was the service going to be? And the body was held in the hospital for almost 10 days because some piece of paper didn't go from the nurse to wherever it needed to go. I'll never get all the details on that because I solved the problem by calling the COO and saying, this is what's happening. But what do you do when you don't have a COO, a friend who knows the COO to call? So how, this bureaucracy, this system is not serving us. I have other examples, but for due to time, I won't share them right now. My work is in transportation, construction, and development, community development with an environmental justice and equity lens. I've worked on a number of projects in the area, people may know. I've worked on the teardown and then the construction of the Kaiser Hospital at Broadway and MacArthur with the communities around there, from the commercial community to the homeless encampments, trying to help make that environment safe for patients and people alike. I'll share more of my story as time allows. Thank you.
You, Ms. Grant. Next, we'll go to David.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you very much for this opportunity to meet. My name is David Kockishiba. I'm running for the Alameda County Supervisor, District 3. My motivation is pretty basic. The way I see it and I have experienced it is that homelessness, crime and violence, and the economic challenges of being able to raise a family are getting worse. They're getting more difficult, more complicated, more people are dying on the streets. And I believe that the county can do a lot better in terms of being focused and providing real leadership in addressing these problems, being outcome-oriented, working in partnership and in collaboration with city government, with nonprofit organizations, with school districts, to align millions and millions of dollars, of public agency dollars, to get the kinds of results that the people in District 3 and throughout the county need desperately. I think there's a lot of people that are rank-and-file residents out there that are very discouraged and don't have a lot of faith or trust in local government to deliver. And that is a bad thing. That's bad for our civic discourse, and that's bad for our quality of life. My intent is to bring a lot of leadership and bringing in the voices, at least in my sphere of the world, working in San Antonio, Fruitvale areas, bringing the voices of these families front and center to the decision and policymaking tables at the county level. I will stop right here. Thank you very much.
David, next we will have Rebecca Kaplan.
Good afternoon, and thank you so much for putting on this forum and for having us here for this important conversation. I come to you today not only to ask for your vote and your support as I'm running for county supervisor, but to ask for our continued collaboration to work together to build a stronger and healthier future for our communities. I have the honor to currently serve as the council member-at-large for the entire city of Oakland and vice mayor of the city. Prior to that, I was the elected director at AC Transit, and my district there encompassed most of the East Bay, including the areas encompassed by county supervisor District 3. I've also served our entire region on the board of the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, and I know that our communities need more support to live healthier lives. That includes that we need to expand investment in job training, including paid job training for our next generation of healthcare workers, and support and fund our community clinics, including telehealth. That means we need to reduce the dangerous air pollution that is disproportionately concentrated on our hard-hit communities, including by expanding on the innovative zero-emission truck project that I helped launch. We need to expand preventative healthcare and protect people from disease, including by making vaccinations more available, both for COVID and for other diseases, building on my experience opening large-scale COVID vaccination site at the Coliseum and convincing the state to bring mobile vans and fund local community outreach and the insistence on having culturally competent care. The county oversees our healthcare, owns a lot of public land that we could use to build affordable housing, and through mobilizing these resources, we can build a healthier future. Thank you so much.
You're Rebecca. We're going to move on to our next question. As you heard from Afumia earlier, the Alameda Health Consortium is a regional association of eight community health centers serving nearly 280,000 patients. Our question is, what do you think are the current challenges and issues facing healthcare in the county? And how will you address these challenges? We'll go to Rebecca first.
Thank you so much. Healthcare in our county has been facing several challenges, one of which was having unaccountable trustees overseeing AHS. And I was proud to join together with community in rallying support to insist on strengthening public oversight of the public hospital system. That was a project that Supervisor Wilma Chan was deeply committed to, and I commit to carrying that forward. But the challenges go far beyond that. An overworked workforce and a shortage of workers is absolutely devastating in terms of its negative impact. And unsafe staffing levels in healthcare facilities put healthcare workers in danger as well as patients. I will work with you and other stakeholders to expand training, paid training, to expand access to affordable housing for our healthcare workers so that they aren't pushed out of our region, to work with immigrant nurses, to work with grassroots community, to recruit people into healthcare worker jobs, to support telehealth being more available, and to support our community health clinics and preventative care. We need to ensure that the workforce has the level of support it needs to avoid danger and burnout, including protective equipment where that's what's needed, including ventilation in our buildings where that is lacking, including strengthening the building repairs and renovations in order to provide a good environment, and protecting the pedestrian safety as well around our facilities so that people are not put in danger getting to and from our healthcare facilities. I believe 20 seconds just popped up. I'm not sure if that was supposed to be time now. And the last thing I would say is I would be honored to work with you and the other stakeholders to continue to address the needs of the healthcare workers as they come up to ensure that they are addressed. Thank you.
I'd like to invite David.
Yeah, to build on that, I think the... And I don't, I apologize in advance if I sound crass or naive. I think the big context is resources or money. The ability to finance the need for healthcare services, let alone for prevention, early intervention, and a public health approach to the reduction and the prevention of chronic diseases throughout the county. There's the amount of money that is invested in healthcare services doesn't match the need and the challenge. And so I think that's certainly one big issue. And even with our county sales tax, Measure A, that it's certainly a big help, but still is, we're still running short. The, in addition to that, is the, I think, hopefully there'll be positive and progressive changes in how healthcare services and mental health services are being reimbursed and being funded at the federal level through the Medicao system. The need to being able to establish or expand a continuum of eligible, Medicao-eligible services, particularly around behavioral health, is a big need. I think the restriction from being able to serve undocumented families and individuals is also a huge challenge, and that, and it's always on constant threat, at least in these most recent political times at the federal level. I'll stop.
David, we'll now turn it over to Ms. Grant.
Hi. The challenges with the county with healthcare, go back to what I called out as one of my motivations, being just to get through the bureaucracy as a consumer, as a user, to know where to go and how to go, and just to get the right, coordinate the right programs and services. And I know that many of your clinics have navigators, and maybe we need to do something a little different. The other aspects of it that are a challenge are safety, not only worker safety, but worker safety for people coming to work in buildings that are worn and old in some cases, and the need to put in new systems, make buildings a little smarter, a little cleaner. We shouldn't have rodents that cause our buildings to have to be closed down. So smarter and safer and cleaner buildings. And then, of course, as Mr. Kockishiba referred to, the supplies, the facilities, just having enough workers, enough people, and enough supplies. But I really think that the spirit is there, that everyone's doing a good job. It's just that we don't, as a consumer, we don't know how to access the services all the time and where to go.
Our next question is...
Do I get to answer that question?
Oh, I'm sorry, Lena. Lena, you're next. Apologies.
I'll try to be brief and not retract. So I think the COVID pandemic brought to light a lot of the vulnerabilities and challenges with the delivery of healthcare services for our system. Apart from the hospital, you know, we've had issues with staffing, distribution of protective equipment, vaccination rollout, burnout of healthcare workers. And so the county is addressing a lot of these through ongoing efforts, including the transition of what's been happening with the hospital system. But apart from the hospital system, they're also looking at reimagining our emergency management system in terms of the ambulance service and making sure that we deliver, we have the appropriate level of care in response to things like mental healthcare. But obviously, the clinics play a very vital role in the access to healthcare, and I would like to see that role expanded as a supervisor because this is where the clinics shine because they were very instrumental in the delivery of vaccines, where you have like one segment of the population that only trusts these clinics because they're in their neighborhoods, they're in transit-oriented areas, and they are often the point where we can integrate a lot of programs like behavioral healthcare. And a lot of the low-income and vulnerable communities that are affected by trauma and poverty have access to culturally and linguistically competent staff at these clinics. So I want to see that kind of expansion moving forward. And I think without these kind of services at the clinic level, we would not be able to completely recover from the pandemic.
Lena, our next question. Community health centers have played an important and historic role in providing comprehensive, linguistically and culturally relevant healthcare services to medically underserved patients throughout Alameda County. If elected, how will you ensure that as a supervisor, health centers are prioritized and supported as trusted healthcare safety net providers for residents in the county? We'll start off with Ms. Grant, then go to Ms. Tam, Rebecca, and then David. Ms. Grant?
Thank you. They are indeed trusted health centers in the community, and people who live in the community, as previously stated, find easy access. They're less intimidated by them, so they are indeed essential. And one way is to make sure that we monitor the budget, to make sure that the allocations of funds are going to them and being to the centers and being used as they are to, and at the same time, looking for efficiencies so that maybe there is a center who is the brain trust, the specialty in one service. So I could go to West Oakland and know that, you know, I can be diagnosed or get what I need, but that there's another center not too far away. I don't want to go all the way across town. Of course, that defeats the purpose. But if we need to look at cost-saving models, maybe that is something we look at. But maybe, maybe we just need to make sure the funds are being allocated the right way and keep the centers operating within their cluster and their community because they do serve a great, a great, a great need. I know that from community people I've worked with. So I want to keep them there as a hallmark. Thank you.
You, Ms. Tam?
As I mentioned earlier, the clinics play a very critical role in our community because they become a trusted place where people can get healthcare, especially for the low-income and the vulnerable in our immigrant population. In fact, during the Trump administration, when we had the whole concern over public charge and affecting your immigration status, and that led to a spike in fear among the immigrants to try to get access to all types of healthcare. And a lot of the immigrant population are, you know, they're part of the essential workers. And so we need to make sure that they have that kind of access. And by providing that access, it means making sure that their insurance payment through Medicao or Medicaid is streamlined, whether it's looking with the Alameda Alliance for Health, or because that, I think, provides like 80% of the processing for Medicao for a lot of these families and looking at maybe streamlining it by consolidating some of these efforts. And also, when we look at what we can do, I know there's already existing partnerships with behavioral health within these clinics, but I think there needs to be more because the demand is just going to outpace what we can provide. So as a county supervisor, one of the things that I would like to see is to help the clinics with this integration of mental healthcare and targeting things that we're going to be seeing more of as a result of the pandemic, whether it's depression, anxiety, PTSD, issues that can be dealt with at the early stage so they don't become a crisis situation for our first responders in the future.
Lena, I'd like to invite Rebecca next.
Thank you so much. Our community health centers are absolutely essential, and my commitment is not only to protect them, but to grow the funding, to grow the resources, and to support having the resources, to have the staffing, the training, and to provide multiple services. We know that early intervention saves money and saves lives and making sure that we have health clinics that are culturally competent, linguistically accessible, and physically accessible in the neighborhoods, in the communities, is absolutely vital to people getting the care that they need, including getting the care earlier. And it's not about the clinics versus the hospitals. If we undersupport the clinics, there will be more people showing up at the hospitals. They will be sicker when they show up, and they will need more expensive interventions. And so my commitment is to continue to expand the support. That includes recognizing that, first of all, the county is not broke. The county has a surplus that hasn't yet been allocated. Second of all, there are many services that are eligible for state reimbursement, and there are steps that have been taken and additional steps that can be taken to increase the reimbursement rate that we're receiving from the state. In addition, we can support preventative care that helps people stay healthier ahead of time. We also can use other funding sources, like workforce funding that's for job training, and use that for job training in healthcare-related fields. We can fully support the expansion of community mental health, including tapping mental health funding and having that in the community. And I want to say, I would bring to this task my track record of being able to win grants and find money that other people didn't know was there. I got tens of millions of dollars from the state to help Oakland expand our innovative civilian crisis community responder program, known as MACRO, to provide community-based mental health rather than incarceration. And I would bring that effort to the county as well. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
So I think one of the first things for me, if I were county supervisor, District 3, is I hope to be appointed to the health committee of the board. And I think from that vantage point, being, or from that position, is being immersed in both the broader healthcare policy and budget priorities of the county, as well as the minutia of the administration of this, of the system. I will have a greater orientation on strong oversight, outcome-based oversight of county systems, and in this case, around healthcare and public health. The other issue is what I saw, and granted, I was not that close and intimate to what you folks were dealing with at the outset or the onset of the pandemic. But my sense is that the counties, at the initial starting gate, didn't have much of a stated and implementable actionable strategy to reach communities and neighborhoods that we already know by years and years of county data, where health outcomes are the poorest because they are in high-poverty neighborhoods and they have the least access to healthcare services. Community clinics is the frontline for that work, and that there should have been an immediate engagement of community clinics and sole sourcing of community clinics for testing, for PPE distribution, and to work with other neighborhood-based entities to do other kinds of wraparound supports to those families and residents that were in a great deal of fear and isolation.
David, our next question relates to health centers as an important partner with the county. As institutions who have longtime trusted relationships with its patients for decades, health centers have played a critical role in the COVID response, serving as an important extension of the county public health department and serving as key frontline responders. Health centers are now critical centers helping to drive COVID recovery. The COVID impacts have been severe, and we'll take long-term investments to address. As we emerge and recover from this public health crisis, what short- and long-term strategies will you employ to ensure that health center patient needs will continue to be supported and addressed? We'll go to David first, then Rebecca, and then to Ms. Tam, and finally to Ms. Grant. David?
I think the first thing is... I, I think the first thing is, and on first, I think the first thing is to be able to have the health centers be at the table around identifying what those, what those needs and those trends that you are looking at. And being able to develop a response, both an immediate and a long-term response that deals with, addresses a change in policy, a change in budget prioritization. It may change, significant changes in organizational structure of the county as well. The, the issue that I think you're raising is incredibly complicated, nuanced. There is no, you know, asking a politician, what will you do? And giving a pat answer, I think, is highly disrespectful to the day-to-day work that you guys are dealing with and so many others are dealing with. So I, I think engagement, partnership in the policymaking is, is absolutely critical. Second is that the Board of Supervisors as a whole, as well as the county administration, needs to be clear that the, we're, we're not responding for one immediate crisis to another immediate crisis. That this is talking about how we build community across the entire county. And it's going to look different in different places. But it's important that, that's what we are, that's what we should be about as county government, is to build, not simply to react and not react through silos and categorical funding and just administering the bureaucracy, but in fact, working with community to build community. Thank you.
David? Our next response will be from Rebecca.
Well, thank you so much. In order to address the needs and solve the problems, we have to be willing to admit the needs and admit the problems. That includes my deep commitment to working with you and hearing from you as problems arise and needs come up. It also means being willing to acknowledge the reality that COVID is not over. It means being willing to admit the reality that many people have now what's called long COVID or long-term impacts from it that will have impacts on people's lives and our healthcare systems for years. It means being willing to acknowledge that the population of Alameda County is aging and the proportion of our community who will be seniors will be rising in the coming years. It means being willing to acknowledge the loss of healthcare staff to burnout, to disease, and to the natural turnover in the population of workforce that hasn't been sufficiently invested in, in terms of training the next generation. It means ensuring language access and support for people with disabilities. I commit to working to fight for support for job training and job recruitment programs, for affordable housing for our healthcare workers, for funding to support these efforts, and to bring the pressure on state and region-wide decision-makers with their funding. When the state of California set up the vaccination process, they required initially people to sign up through a website that excluded so many in our hardest-hit communities. And I worked together with Alameda County Health Leaders and Community Coalitions to fight to allow people to sign up in ways that did not require access to technology. There are so many things that are done that impede equity, impede language access, and impede community. I commit to working with you to achieve these goals. I recently successfully intervened to find a creative new funding source to expand Meals on Wheels service so that our communities would have access to healthy food during the pandemic. And I would similarly do so for our health clinics. Thank you.
Rebecca. Now to Ms. Tam?
The lessons that we learned from the pandemic are really clearly spelled out in the priority areas that you had sent us and outlined. And that is something that I would like to integrate into a short-term and a longer-term strategic planning. One of the things that we definitely learned is the distribution of testing and vaccination is at its best at the clinic level and frankly, not at the hospital level. And making sure that there is an adequacy of resources to distribute that kind of healthcare is, is really important moving forward, as well as making sure that we have the infrastructure, the technological infrastructure that's necessary so that we have access to telehealth services and also have 24/7 access for people that are in need of urgent care. And then obviously, in the long run, we need to find ways to improve the retention and the recruitment of our healthcare workers because we are going through major transitions with a lot of burnout in our healthcare workforce. Making sure that workforce is linguistically and culturally competent to work with our most vulnerable communities, especially the immigrant community. And also making sure that we have proper mechanisms in place that allows for a streamlining of payment that we have, especially if they're getting Medi-Cal or Medicaid payment, that that, I know that's ever-changing, but making sure that we have that kind of administrative process in place should be part of our ongoing long-term goals, along with some of the broader, like high-dream efforts to see if we can get some form of universal healthcare coverage for everyone that isn't tied to your employment or non-employment. So those are the kind of things that I think are going to be part of that strategic plan. And I think the clinics and the representation of all of you should be part of that conversation.
Alina, for our final response, could you turn it over to Ms. Grant?
The joy is of being the last one to answer a question. I agree with everything that all my opponents have said at this point. But I'll, I'll look at this in two ways. The, the lessons learned from COVID, the users and the providers. From the users, I think that the, the good thing that came out of this for the community health systems is the attention to the community health systems and how we, how much we need to rely on them. And the fact that they were a safe place, if you will, for the consumer, the user, the neighbor to go to. So they could go to a friendly environment and get their COVID shot. Well, now they know they can also go there for other services. They can go there for immunization. It was culturally competent. There was language. Some, in some instances, people saw their friends and their neighbors, and they could sit down and wait and talk with people in a, while they're waiting for service delivery. So, so that, that was a benefit. I saw this. I've worked with the Black Women Organized for Political Action with their Black and Vax campaign, and we did some work out of the Tuba Raisio Vasquez Center. So I, I've seen this happen. And so I, I speak to the users and, and how that worked. From the providers, what worked, what worked? I would ask the question, what long-term enhancements do you need or want that came out of that? You know, I wasn't, I wasn't a witness to the backend. I only know the backend from what I've heard or what I've read in the newspaper. And I'm sure there are some reforms that came out of that experience. And it's actually still continuing because I know we're still providing healthcare and long-term COVID and the boosters and all of this. That I would, as supervisor, sit down at the table with you and say, what are some of the reforms? What, what happened? What do you, what did you, you know it best? What do you want to see that we can implement to make, make this a win out of, out of such hard times? What's the win for us? What is the takeaway? Thank you.
Good with that. Can I shift to our last moderated question? Just a reminder, if folks have questions from the audience, please chat Jody. We'll have a time for a few questions from the audience. The late Supervisor Wilma Chan was a champion for Kami Health Centers, immigrant rights, language and cultural access, healthcare for the underserved, and a leader in the fight for healthcare justice for all. How will you expand high-quality, linguistically and culturally competent healthcare for our underserved? And what investments will you make to improve the medical, dental, and behavioral health quality and outcomes of our most vulnerable county residents? I would like to invite Ms. Tam for our first response, then Ms. Grant, and then David, and then Rebecca. Ms. Tam?
The late Supervisor Wilma Chan was definitely my role model and inspiration when it came to providing for our underserved, especially when it comes to healthcare access. The issues of providing linguistically and culturally competent staff is a top priority when it comes to providing adequate and high-quality care to our immigrant population. And one of the centers that I have been working with sort of peripherally is the Diversity in Healthcare Institute in trying to recruit and train staff that can provide the kind of care in a way that the community, especially our immigrant community, can understand. The other things that I've worked on is mainly through policy arenas because I had been active both at the county, at the city level, and at the state level with the League of Women Voters. And I think there are coalitions that can be built and have been built by the late Supervisor Wilma Chan that I'd like to expand on. For example, the, the issue that we had to deal with, where we got the League of Women Voters to weigh in, was particularly on, on public charge and making sure that our immigrant community feels protected, that the information that they share, because by virtue of getting healthcare and free access to healthcare, is not going to compromise their livelihood in this country. And having that, that kind of policy and making sure we provide the, the kind of sanctuary policies in place is something that will be critical moving forward.
Alina, I'd like to invite Ms. Grant next.
I want to thank Supervisor Wilma Chan in spirit for the work that she did because her work really is the baseline for what we need to do at this point. We have, we can't go backwards. So we have to keep all that she's put in place in place and build upon it. And, you know, she's got great nutrition programs. So I see us being more proactive, with the all-in. There are other programs in the county, the Anti-Tobacco Program, that we need to make sure that we keep that as a baseline for, for good public health and social health. I think what we need to do is also more public education. Ms. Tam just spoke about the public charge. A lot of people probably don't know that, that it's changed in recent years, and so that is not as restrictive as it was in the previous administration. So people can come to the clinics and get the help that they need. So we need to do public education on that. I've been speaking to the fact that we need to have public education on mental health, that we need to have a strategy that we can check in with each other, especially as people come out of this COVID, young people, students, immigrants. You know, our, our lives are different. So we need to be able to have, we need to reach out to people. And maybe we do that by having a public education campaign. It's the person you're working, you're sitting with right now doing okay. And then to bolster our programs, we sit in a, in a place full of resources, a richness of resources with all the universities and schools around, from the schools of nursing to UC Berkeley to Stanford for medical schools. And, and we can borrow from our youth institutions to maybe staff up so that we can bolster these programs that she's put in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Her next response? We'll go to David.
For me, there's two big arenas to make it real, real advances and to achieve. First is the, being able to have universal health access, healthcare access. Being able to, to achieve that minimally at California statewide level and ideally on the federal level, I think, will dramatically change the landscape and, and will literally be a game changer. That will open up a great deal more opportunities to, in addition to the issue around money and affordability. But in terms of the quality of care and the cultural, linguistic, and geographic access to healthcare services will be, I, I think, will be addressed as we go down that road. I think the second arena that the county can do a lot more of, that I'd like to see at a high priority, is addressing the social determinants of health. And much, 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 much stronger public health presence and sort of a domination of the narrative of how we are going to improve health outcomes in our county and in our, in our neighborhoods that are hardest hit is really pushing up that language, pushing up that policy, and investing county resources to make good on addressing some high-leverage social determinants of health.
David? Our last response will go to Rebecca.
Well, thank you so much. I want to share not only what I'm prepared to fight for, but why you can trust that I would be the one to get it done. First of all, in making sure that we absolutely denounce and block the abuse and harassment of immigrants. I was the author in Oakland on the ban on Oakland Police Department collusion with ICE on deportations, which we successfully passed through the council despite some strong resistance to it. And I would bring that dedication to the county, as well as our work expanding language access throughout government services. I also fully recognize that providing community mental health is absolutely essential. And that providing mental health services preventatively is so much cheaper than putting people in jail and wasting lives and wasting dollars to wait for that approach. I have a track record of successfully doing that, fighting both for the initial study and then the budget allocation to launch the Civilian Crisis Responder Program in Oakland, known as MACRO. I will expand on the commitment to healthy food, something which I have worked on in collaboration with Supervisor Wilma Chan as we work to write and pass the soda tax in the city of Oakland, and then use the money from the soda tax to roll out and support important programs, including access to healthy food and other supports throughout our community with the Healthy Corner Store Conversion, Food as Medicine, and Farmers Markets, and more. I will work to ensure expanded access to all aspects of reproductive healthcare. Santa Clara County Supervisors recently expanded their investments in reproductive healthcare, and that includes protecting maternal health, that includes protecting fertility, and that includes protecting access to abortion and contraception throughout our county. I will work to expand job training programs and continue the fight for universal, single-payer healthcare, as well as on the immediate term, making sure that we are getting the state reimbursements, the money from the ballot measure, the money from the county's own actions to fund these vital needs. Thank you.
Rebecca, I'm going to shift us to an audience question. Candidates, you'll have one minute to respond, given our time for the forum. So the question is, Wilma Chan was a champion for homelessness solutions. Will you take over that mission if elected? I'd like to start off with Rebecca.
Yes, absolutely. I would be honored to, and I am already taking those steps even in my current role. For example, we have worked to purchase dorms and hotels, which is one of the most successful efforts to have a program where you have rooms so that people can get off the streets immediately in a building that also has onsite staff and services. The county controls the overwhelming majority of the homeless services money. And so I would expand on projects like the Lake Merritt Lodge and other buildings that can be used immediately and directly to get people off the streets. I've also fought hard for policies to use public land for public good. We need to dramatically expand the supply of affordable housing. And with land so expensive, one of the strongest ways we can achieve this is by putting out public land to build affordable housing on. The county owns a lot of land, and we can make sure that that happens and comply with the Surplus Lands Act. The county also takes in tax auction properties, hundreds of houses every year that get sold to investors. We can use that too for affordable housing. Thank you.
Rebecca. David? Rebecca, David?
Julie, could you repeat that question? It got garbled on my end.
The question was that Wilma Chan was a champion for homelessness solutions, and will you take over that mission if elected?
Homelessness solutions. Yes, absolutely. That's my top concern and my motivation for running for supervisor. And I appreciate all the hard work that a lot of people in Oakland and throughout the county are working on around getting people off the streets. The fact of the matter is, it's just gotten worse and that the construction of deeply affordable housing in Oakland is virtually nonexistent. It's very small relative to the construction and onboarding of market-rate housing. So we have a big picture of income inequality that is driving and property values rising and rents rising that are driving the homeless situation in part, as well as an inefficient or a broken behavioral health services system. I believe that it's important that we are, as a county board of supervisors, I think it's important to declare that homelessness is a crisis. It's a public health crisis, and we are in a state of emergency. And that we need to bring a centralized leadership body within the county bureaucracy to bring the different agencies and departments together in the appropriate role of what county government does relative to saying that homeless, because there is no Department of Homelessness. That's how government bureaucracies work, is by their various departments. We need to provide very focused, highest-level leadership attention to the eradication and the mitigation of unhoused people living on the streets. Top priority. I'll be very hands-on about that, and results is what matters. People want those results.
David, Serleene? Oh, you're on mute.
I'm sorry. I thought I unmuted. So would I take over? I would be the shepherd. I think this is a, I specialize professionally in creating collaborative approaches to policymaking and decision-making. And we need all the supervisors to take the lead on this. This is a county-wide problem. It shows up greatly in District 3. It's true. So I would definitely be the shepherd of the process. My motivation to get in this office, as I said in my opening statement, was and is, remains people's housing, keeping people in their homes. How are we going to keep people in the homes? I think when this moratorium is lifted, we're going to have to find ways to provide 200, 300, through maybe a universal basic income model, dollars a month so that people can fill their gaps so that six months from now, they're not evicted. I think that's why pre-pandemic, we were having that problem happen and people were being left out on the street. I also think we need to do some reunification services with family and support people, provide support systems so that families can reconnect, and that would also alleviate some of the homelessness. Thank you.
Serleene, Lena?
Absolutely. I've had the opportunity to meet with several of the community-based organizations that the late Supervisor Wilma Chan was working with. And a lot of these were navigation centers like the Laug Family Development Group, and they have had a really high success rate in providing that continuum of care, whether it's going from making sure there's no wrong door when somebody comes through the door and getting the case management with getting them a continuum of care with transitional housing, you know, looking at their whole needs, whether it's rental assistance, transportation, job training, education, and then financial security, moving them into a more sustainable, permanent housing. And then as a result of Supervisor Chan's work with the All-In Program, her staff informed me that it was the county received $6.6 million to provide for youth homelessness, basically youth between the ages of 18 and 24. And that is going in full force right now with the youth at the table, looking at what is absolutely necessary for that program. Thank you.
I'm going to do a time check. I want to check in with the candidates. We do have a couple more questions from the audience. Wanted to see if you might be willing to stay on a little bit longer for another 10 minutes. If not, we can end with closing statements.
I have to, I have to go to San Lorenzo.
All right. So why don't we do this? So thank you for the audience for your questions. We'll make sure to get those to the candidates. So we would appreciate if folks could respond, and then we can make sure to post a sort of Q and A from this along with recording. But why don't we go ahead and wrap up? And each candidate, you will have one minute for a closing statement. So Lena, why don't we start with you?
Thank you again for hosting this forum. I want to work with you to be your voice on the Board of Supervisors. I believe I bring the depth and the breadth of experience and leadership to the board by serving on the Alameda City Council, being president of the Healthcare District Board, and chairing the Alameda County Planning Commission. I continue to be active in the community from my days in college where I was tutoring immigrant kids on life skills at Lincoln School, performing the East Bay Asian Voter Education Consortium, and now the Asian Pacific Democratic Caucus. I've worked to empower our community in the electoral process. I am a part of existing coalitions advocating for pedestrian safety, affordable housing, a wellness center, and condemning hate crimes. And I want to continue to work with you to elevate the legacy of the late Wilma Chan to new heights in improving access to county safety net services. I'm honored to have the support of community leaders like Controller Betty Yee, Treasurer Fiona Moss, Supervisor Dave Brown, former Supervisor Alice Lightbicker, County Assessor Fong Law, and Mayors Ashcraft and Libby Schapp, and over 60 community leaders. Thank you.
Go to Rebecca next.
Thank you so much for having us together today. And I look forward to continuing to work together to build a stronger and healthier future for our communities. I know that we need preventative health, including preventative mental health, and to strengthen and support our community health clinic. I will bring to this task my track record of finding the money and getting it to essential services. Like when some billionaires tried to rip us off of $50 million, and I initiated the litigation that got that money back for our communities. We passed sales tax on online sales so that we wouldn't lose funding for vital services in the pandemic, and these services are vital. I'm honored to be endorsed by a wide coalition of people and groups, including the Democratic Party, Planned Parenthood, the National Union of Healthcare Workers, the California Nurses Association, our firefighters, community leaders like Sandre Swanson, Supervisor Vaughn, Mayor Elihu Harris, and many more. I'd be very honored to have your vote. You can learn more at SupervisorCaplin.org. And I've put my contact info in the chat. I look forward to continuing our conversation. Thank you.
Rebecca, now let's invite David to go next. David, you're on mute.
Thank you very much again for, again, the opportunity to have this conversation. I am going to put in the chat my telephone number and my email address. I invite everybody here to, if you have any questions, you wish to have more discussion about what was shared this afternoon, I'd love to have that conversation with you. And please contact me. And you could do it 24/7, though if you're going to do it at 1 o'clock in the morning, you know, you'll get, I'll respond to you a few hours after that. But I do want to have that conversation. I work as Executive Director of the East Bay Asian Youth Center. I've done this for 42 years, working with hundreds and thousands of young people over that time period. I know the hard work that each and every one of you do and your fellow colleagues in your organizations. And it is understated, underappreciated, and I thank you for your service.
David, finally, Ms. Grant.
Thank you for this opportunity to share. But it's my desire to make Alameda County a hallmark county. As I said, we have too many resources not to. We need to be providing the best for all of our people, black, brown, other immigrant citizens. We need to just be the inclusive place that we are, providing services in an equitable way. I have a track record of working in both community work and professional work to provide just that kind of equity and policy. You haven't seen me on the dais in about 10 years, but I've been doing the work all the time. One of my recent activities is the Unity in the Community for Stanley Andrew, which I co-founded to bring racial harmony and unity within our communities. I want to bring that and all my other experiences to the county. You can learn more about me at my website, serleenggrantoneword.com. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'd like to thank all of the candidates for your time today and for joining us this afternoon and for participating in this forum today and sharing your priorities and your vision. I'd like to give special thanks to the staff at the Alameda Health Consortium, who helped make this forum happen, and for bringing our collective clinic members together to host this important forum. And thank you all to all of you in the audience who've attended. Please know we will be placing the recorded session on the Alameda Health Consortium YouTube channel. We'll make sure to get the Q and A to our candidates with responses as well. So please feel free to share with your colleagues and community members. So thank you again. This closes out our candidates forum for today, and thank you again for attending.